It is.
I'd like to call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegions, please.
United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hold call, we're just missing Jeff. Make sure we'll come our new Planning Commission member, Mark Arnold.
Do you want to introduce yourself or folks on the Planning Commission?
Well.
Do you have no obligation, just if you want to?
That's fine. Well, again, Mark Arnold was a member of the Police Department here for thirty-two years, retired now, lived in Wade Park all my life, so I've got a vested interest in the community I grew up in and looking forward to helping the city move forward on the planning part of it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And Planning Commission members, I would note typically City Administrator Shawna Johnson doesn't attend these meetings. It's probably been a long time since you've seen her at one. She's here tonight on behalf or at the request of Martin Marietta simply because she has more extensive knowledge and history of having been through the five-year review with them a couple of times. We all just thought it might be a little bit better to have staff on hand that has been through that process once or twice in case any questions came up.
Agenda, is there any additions or deletions on the agenda?
No.
Move for approval of the agenda?
Second?
I can all in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Pass with all present. Buy periodic review of conditional use permit. John, go ahead and open the public hearing right away?
You can read the, the public hearing notice.
Notice of Public Hearing, the Wade Park Planning Commissioner will hold a public hearing at City Hall, Nineteenth Thirteenth Avenue North at six-thirty or soon after on Tuesday, April ninth, twenty nineteen, to hear the following request. Request of Martin Marietta Materials, Inc. for five-year review, conditional use permit, and to modify the existing conditional use permit for mining Rainbow Quarry, South, Highway twenty-three in a I-one light industrial district to include portions donated, to exclude portions donated to the city of Wade Park and include property recently acquired for purposes of mining setback. The property is legally described as all that part of the northwest quarter, northeast quarter, and all the part of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter. Northeast quarter, northwest quarter, Section nineteen, Township one-twenty-four, Range twenty-eight, West Stearns County, Minnesota, lying southerly of the Northwest Street right-of-way of trunk, State Trunk Highway twenty-three, and northerly of the Center Line of the County Aid Road one-thirty-seven, less and accepting certain areas.
Chair Jansky, Planning Commission members, those folks in the audience and anyone perhaps watching later, we have two requests associated with this particular item. The first one, I'll toggle over to the, to the map that's been submitted by the applicant. Part of the request is a proposed amendment of the conditional use permit that applies to the southern quarry typically called Rainbow Quarry. We would revise the legal description and shift the boundary of the mining footprint of Rainbow Quarry. The applicants recently acquired the area in green here on the western edge of, or western side of their existing property, and now they're looking to seek its inclusion within the subject area of the conditional use permit. The request would also shift the mining, what they call the mining footprint, of the allowable mined area. You see the current area outlined with blue. The request would shift that to the yellow outline. The, the area stays the same, but the existing conditions and geology of the site for their purposes, as they've moved along, the, the yellow area has become more appealing. Essentially, the area in green that's being added would serve kind of as a buffer area. No activity would take place upon that site, although it, they could perhaps seek that in the future if they feel that that request would be worthwhile, and we could potentially see that as a separate request and separate associated review and hearings. You see, there's some buildings on the southern side. This is the former Anderson property. The buildings would stay, would not be utilized for, for anything at this time at least. Applicants have no intended use for them, although they, they've noted that they could potentially be open to selling literally the buildings themselves if someone were to approach and make an offer to take them off-site. But otherwise, the, the area in green that was recently acquired, no changes for that property at this time. I would note that the entirety of the, the mined area still falls within the, the established boundaries of both the existing conditional use permit and the previous environmental assessment worksheet that was done. If they do opt to pursue expanding that area into the area cross-hatched in green, we'd probably need to revisit those reviews as well, so we'd, it would be likely a more extensive and more thorough process in line with the standard review requirements. At the same time, we've also worked with the applicants to have their request to remove and exclude the portion of the property that was previously donated to the city, and it's now being utilized for the amphitheater project. You can see that area located in red along Seventeenth Avenue, South. We'd like to remove that from the, essentially the legal description and from all the language of the conditional use permit. Not that it would really cause any issues ever, but just to get it out of there just for posterity's sake and ensure that it doesn't come up in the future. We had discussed that in the past, and that was something we're, we're going to pursue anyway, and the timing just kind of worked out that if we're looking at this request in the periodic review, it seemed opportune to do it at this point. We did review this request at a joint work session meeting at the Planning Commission and City Council last week. There was no concerns were expressed during that meeting. Staff is supportive of the request is outlined to modify the mining footprint as proposed and include areas and exclude areas as outlined. I don't see that there's any negative impact on overall operations due to the nature of the proposed amendments. And again, should further operations be requested at Rainbow Quarry into that newly-added property, there will be sufficient opportunity for further review and consideration at that time on proposal specifics as they may come forward. We also have incorporated with this request the, the periodic five-year review of the conditional use permit for the entirety of the mining operations, both, both in North Quarry and South Rainbow Quarry. This was incorporated into the conditional use permit to allow both the city and the public to have opportunities to review the operations, ensure that the conditional use permit is being adhered to, and if necessary, to start the process of changing any aspects that either party may deem as a, an item of concern or that should potentially be addressed. We did provide public notices to, of this request to everybody surrounding both north and south quarries within the stipulated notification area, excuse me, per our ordinance and state statute. Staff hasn't identified any concerns with existing operations. We, we do receive periodic blast complaints, but they, they typically are generated from a single property, and we've previously worked to address those concerns with the city blasting consultant that's been utilized. I have not seen any complaints in, excuse me, past several years from any of the many other property owners in the areas surrounding the, both quarries. I believe that the operations are operating as approved, and I don't see a need at this point for further review. We did schedule our meet and confer with the, with Martin Marietta representatives and did kind of touch base on operations, and I do feel that everything is going essentially status quo, so to speak, and I don't see any issues at this point, and no recommendations for further review of the conditional use permit. That, this would be reviewed by the City Council as well, both requests. We have looked forward to that review tentatively scheduled for May sixth. This request does include a, a public hearing component, so members of the public do have their opportunity for input as well. I've, I've received one call on the request. It was just a call for clarification of the notice from someone in the eleventh or twelfth avenue area, kind of adjacent to the, to the ball fields across the street here, and I was able just to answer those questions, and there's no further issues there. That being said, I would recommend approval of the, excuse me, request and amendments to conditional use permit as below. Number one, updated Rainbow Quarry mining area and site plan are adopted, provided overall mining footprint does not exceed fifty-two-point-two-five acres. Number two, property depicted on the submitted site plan for Rainbow Quarry is incorporated into approved conditional use permit subject area, but may not be mined unless further review approval via additional amendment to conditional use permit process occurs. Number three, property now owned by City of Wade Park Amphitheater is removed and excluded from all applicable conditional use permit components. We would look to have the, the language formalized as, in resolution form with the existing language ahead of the City Council meeting, but those are the elements that I'd recommend approval of. This concludes my report, so we'll can open up for questions or a public hearing.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and members of the Planning Commission. My name is Neil Grant. I'm the Natural Resources Director for Martin Marietta Materials Midwest Division, and also with me this evening is our Alden District Vice President, Mark Johnson, and our local plant manager, Tim Kubel. And we're here this evening to request your recommendation of approval for our proposal. I'd like to thank John for a very thorough explanation of the proposal. I don't know that I have a whole lot more to add. I would simply reiterate and emphasize, as John has pointed out, there's no mining proposed on the additional sixty acres to the west. It will simply be a additional buffer and setback at this time, and any future changes to that would require a, a conditional use permit amendment and a thorough review as well as an environmental review. As it relates to the shift in mining footprint, again, no change in the size, simply moving it to more accurately reflect the geology of the site, and that all mining will continue to take place on the existing CUP property boundary as well as the existing environmental assessment worksheet or EAW boundary. With that, we're certainly available should you have any questions, and we thank you for your support.
This is public hearing. Does anybody else have any comments to make, or?
Neil, I would have one question. I just thought, as I'm looking at the property, have you folks done a study on that land there that you purchased, the green area, as far as rock availability or mining availability?
No, we have not, not yet.
Okay.
We bought it primarily as a buffer. We do intend to drill it at some point to see if rock exists, but at this time, we've not done that.
Okay, thank you.
I move we close the public hearing.
Motion of second, close public hearing. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Hearing closed at six forty-five. Commissioners, have you got any questions?
It's pretty clear-cut, pretty easy to understand. So I'm going to make a motion to recommend approval of the application.
I'll second that.
Motion and a second? You want to put any conditions on?
The three conditions. Are there three? Three staff recommendations we'll make as, as conditions.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Pass with all present.
Thank you, guys, for coming.
Thank you.
Safe travels.
Thank you.
We still have to, have to pass the second part of that, correct?
Yes, the, the periodic review.
So do we have to go through the whole presentation again?
No.
Make a motion?
No, you can, you can make a motion.
Right, all right. I will do so then at this time as to recommend, make a motion to recommend approval for the second part of that CUP application.
Second?
There are motion, first and a second. All in favor, single by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, same sign. Pass with all present. Item number six, notice of public hearing. The Wade Park Planning Commissioner will hold a public hearing at City Hall, Nineteenth Thirteenth Avenue, North, at six-thirty soon after on Tu- Tuesday, April ninth, twenty nineteen, to hear the following request. Request of Jerome R. Zabinski Revocable Trust and Franklin Outdoor Advertising, dorm portion of the property from A-one agricultural rural residential to BPC-two, I-ninety-four, twenty-three, entrance corridor business park, commercial for a conditional use, use permit to allow for three off-premises signs, billboards, for variance from Wade Park City Ordinance, Section fifty-three-point-two subdivision two, to reduce the minimum height of bottom of the premise signage from twenty feet to zero feet. The property is legally described as part of the east half, the southeast quarter of section, southeast quarter, Township one-twenty-four, Range twenty-nine, Stearns County, Minnesota. You're all welcome to attend the public hearing or submit written comments pertaining to the request. Public hearing opened at six forty-nine.
Mr. Chair, I will excuse myself from this, the voting on this matter as it will constitute a conflict of interest. I will take part in the discussion if that's all right.
Thank you, Grant. Mr. Chair, Planning Commission members, those in the audience, anyone watching later, first of all, forgive me for my cough. I'm still coming off of a bug from a couple of weeks ago, so I'll try to cough off mic if I can do that at all. Again, this request is looking to rezone a portion of property from the A-one to a BPC-two commercial district for a conditional use permit to allow for three billboards on the, the applicant property, and for variance to drop the, the minimum height of the bottom of the off-premise signs from twenty to zero feet. That's being pursued due to the Excel overhead lines that preclude typical billboard-style construction in that area to meet their standards for clearances. If this request looks a little familiar, it's because it's very similar to the request we received from the neighbors, Jeff and Stacy Blonigan, over the summer of twenty eighteen. Planning Commission, excuse me, did recommend approval of that request, and it was ultimately approved by the City Council, and the applicants have, at that time, the Blonigans have commenced on, on their project. I've got a, a general location map of the, the property in question on screen. As you can see, it's west of County Road one-thirty-seven and in the area of County Road six. A portion of the property is rezoned or proposed to be split and rezoned to the BPC-two commercial classification, which is in line with what we view for the area. I highlighted the areas that are proposed to be rezoned. It's a basic drawing on my behalf. I think it gets the, the concept across. These areas are of a sufficient size and configuration to allow for future long-term commercial office retail development and potential further subdivision. It is in excess of the BPC-two minimum, so they, it could accommodate future uses when ready. The area is not being planted at this time, rather the pending City Council approval. The area would be administratively split from the remainder of the parcel. Again, this is a very similar in nature to what was done for the Blonigan request. Basically, it would be unwiser the owners to commit to the parcel split until the rezoning would be approved, but for a split, we can review that administratively when it's of a proper configuration, and this one would meet that, that qualifying criteria. We do currently view this area within the future land use plan as a long-term commercial in nature, so it is in line with what we view as long-term appropriate plans. We anticipate that a forthcoming update of the comprehensive plan to be expected in the next year or two will maintain that as well. I, I do recommend approval of the rezoning component. The requested conditional use permit and moving into that and the variance would allow for construction of the three off-premise signs or billboards along the frontage of the Zabinski property adjacent I-ninety-four. The proposed sign locations are reflected on the survey copy on screen. You can see them in the, the little dot areas, kind of at the mid and outer areas of the, of the frontage. The proposed signs, as they lay, meet the minimum one-thousand-feet distance requirements between them and from the currently approved sign locations on the adjacent Blonigan property to the west. All signs are proposed to be static, which is the non-digital display, and the designs reflect the dimensions in line with city requirements, or tr- traditional V-shaped design. It's a pretty standard billboard design for what we see in the area, and for utilization along highways. I've, I've been contacted after notices went out by the adjacent property owner, the Blonigans, after they received the public hearing notice of their request. They have noted that they're considering adjusting the location of their, their eastern billboard due to some, what they're saying are visual aspects with existing currently-installed signage, and inquired how the, the proposed request may impact that. There is some room to adjust the locations on the proposed Zabinski property a bit. We haven't gotten into a lot of discussion about that, and staff is amenable to working with the applicants on adjusted locations as long as required distances between the billboards is maintained. We can do very slight adjustments to locations administratively, but I think what they're looking at would be on the tier that it would require further review by Planning Commission or, or City Council unless it is, it does determine to be a, a very, very slight adjustment in the realm of twenty feet or less. Preliminary details of the sign design are attached. The proposed signs would, and I apologize, I had a typo here. I was working off the previous report because the, the request is so similar to what we reviewed previously with the neighbors. These signs would be operated by Franklin Outdoor Advertising under a, a long-term lease arrangement with the, with the property owners. That, that's not the same scenario as was utilized by the Blonigans, but is traditionally more typical for billboard request. The variance component is being requested to allow for the bottom of the billboards to be placed lower to grade, so they can avoid impeding the overheads of Excel lines. My recommendation would be to request the height or reduce the height requirement to zero feet, just in case the design considerations and site work lead to that being necessary rather than them having to intend on putting it a little bit higher and then having to come back and request that be lower again. This is the same allowance that was granted to the neighbors as well, and it's, it seems appropriate for this area given the limitations of the Excel lines. I do believe that they demonstrate a practical difficulty due to those, those lines. The applicants have no control over those and can't feasibly work around them. I do recommend approval of the rezoning. I recommend approval of the, the variance as submitted, and I would recommend approval of the conditional use permit with the recommendations outlined that I'll run through briefly right here. I have five recommended conditions. Number one, a permit from the City of Wade Park shall be obtained prior to fabrication or installation of the billboard structure. Permit will not be issued unless valid MinDOT advertising device permit is on file with City of Wade Park. Number two, all design, or excuse me, all sign faces shall reflect maximum sizes of twelve-foot height, thirty-six foot wide, not to exceed four-hundred square feet per city ordinance. Number three, total height of the billboard shall not exceed thirty-six feet above grade. That's our city standard. Number four, all signage displays, displays, both static and digital, although I would, again, note digital is not being proposed at this time, shall adhere to City Ordinance, Section fifty-three-point-two-zero, as well as any applicable MinDOT or other state of Minnesota regulations. And lastly, number five, proposed off-premise sign, signage is subject to annual licensing by city and payment of fee as established in schedule of fees and updated from time to time. This concludes my report. We can open up for questions or comments from the Planning Commission or those in attendance with the public hearing.
This is a public hearing. If you want to come up, state your name and address.
Hi there. My name is Jeff Blonigan. I currently reside in Sartell, but the neighboring property owner here. I have no complaints about rezoning or anything that's going on here other than the placement of one sign. We went to MinDOT and pulled a permit to move our sign seven-hundred-and-forty-five feet southeast of where it currently was supposed to be put up, and we did that because our property is currently zoned commercial. So we went to MinDOT. They gave us a permit for that, and the reason we moved the sign location is there's a blue sign on the freeway that is owned by Minnesota Logos. Originally, over the winter, we were looking at moving that sign. It was going to cost us about ten-thousand dollars to move it. We were willing to acquire that cost to move it, but after Minnesota Logos looking into it with MinDOT, they had twenty-five feet that they could move that sign, so it wasn't going to accomplish anything that we wanted it to do for our sightlines. The only way to get around that was to move our whole sign to the southeast so that our left-hand read would still be visible from the freeway because we can't go very tall there, or our height, we can't raise it up because of the high-line poles that are running through there. We have very tight things that we need to work with there. So we went to MinDOT right away to pull it. We were going to come in and, and get John involved with it, but we thought we had plenty of time since the ground was frozen. Once you pull those permits from MinDOT, they're only good for so long, so that, that's, that's why we, you know, we're waiting on that. Once you pull those permits from MinDOT, they're only good for so long. So, that, that's, that's why we, you know, we're waiting on that. But we currently have a permit from MinDOT that is seven hundred and forty-five feet and from my recor- resh, or from what I know, uh, nobody can put a billboard within five hundred feet per MinDOT's standards now. So, the only problem that, or my concern that I have is the billboard that would be the, the standalone there is just the spacing. Everything else I'm fine with. Do you guys have any questions for me or?
And I can, I can comment to that as well. Um, I think what, what Mr. Blonigan is referencing in that, in getting me involved is that, uh, MinDOT permits are separate from what the city requires. We would view the, although they may be okay with moving it without further review and, and approval, because it is tied to a conditional use permit, we approve the, the sign locations in, in the format that, that they're presented to us. So, they're, without coming back and, and requesting that, essentially an amendment and/or variance or, uh, whatever the, the process may dictate to, to adjust that sign location of the, the sign in question. They're, at the moment locked into the, the site plan that was previously reviewed and approved.
And, and my understanding of that was the conditional use permit was good for that property. And when we drew up this, the site plan of it, it was approximate location is, is from what I understand of it. So, my understanding was is that we had some, some leeway to play there with it. And because of the signage that is on the freeway, that's why we pulled the permit from MinDOT. Because once those are pulled, nobody else is putting a billboard within a certain location of that area. You know, the MinDOT standards is five hundred feet, Wait Park's is a thousand feet. So, by MinDOT standards, nobody's gonna be able to put another billboard within five hundred feet from that new location that we pulled that permit. And the reason we did that is to protect our sightline. We had to move it because of that blue sign that's on the freeway. I- if we put a board up where we originally intended on, nobody would see our eastbound read. And so, that's why we adjusted the location of it. And that's why we went to MinDOT on Friday and looped them and we tried to loop John on in Friday as well, um, and tried to head this off as soon as possible. We only became aware that, uh, Franklin and Mr. Zabinski here were, uh, doing this is of Thursday. Before that, we had no idea this was even happening. So, that's why we hurried up and, and did what we did.
I had a question for you. Could you move the sign the other direction and not have to move it seven hundred feet?
No, because then we interfere. We go into a wetland area. And then also, we reduce the spacing to under the thousand foot s- spacing that is required by Wait Park. So, our only option was to move it the other way. And we, it's still on our property. It's still currently zoned commercial. So, from what MinDOT standards are, we're able to pull the permit. And the way MinDOT works, it's the first person there gets the permit. So, that's why we hurried up and pulled it. And like I said, I have no problems with, and then, uh, one other thing we did, and I, I wanna work with everybody. But when we looked at the spacing of what they're currently proposing, and if you work off of Highway fifteen and go the other way, and I realize it's not the piece of parcel that they're looking at right now, but if they were to rezone that large piece and come from fifteen off, they would get the same exact, uh, signs is what they're trying to do from, working from our direction the other way. I just wanted to make everybody aware of that. So, I have no problem with what they're trying to do. It's just that one sign and the spacing of it. Because, you know, we're, we're gonna be adjusting ours and going through the process. If we need to get another conditional use permit through the city, we'll, we'll be asking for that. The way it stands right now through MinDOT, from MinDOT's perspective, we have permission to put a sign up there. Thank you.
Evening, Mr. Chair, planning commission members. My name's Steve Anderson. I'm representing, uh, Franklin Outdoor Advertising and I've been working with Mr. Zabinski here on this project. In fact, we worked on this about seven, eight years ago when he went through some annexing and sign ordinance, um, changes and things like that. We talked about signs here back then. Yeah, the request is to get rezoned to commercial to match, you know, the, you guys, the, the billboard zone has been expanded and uh, that's why Jerry and I talked, uh, again about this and, um, decided to go through with this and, and all, our information is all based off what was approved and what was on a survey for the Blonigans and in those signs and those locations. So, we based all that information, uh, based our information and our spacing requirements on what was already approved at the city level. You know, the, the, the state, you know, the, thing's gotta be zoned commercial in order to get a permit. I did apply for a state permit at our Westerly site there. And, um, and they can't give a permit until it's zoned commercial. That's why we're going through this process and it all coincides with the billboard zone. So, what was approved for the Blonigans is what we went with, with this application. They have sightline issues. We have sightline issues. We got an overpass. We got CapEx lines. We gotta place our signs in the, in the best possible position as well. And we only got a, you know, a few feet to play with one way or the other. So, um, you know, I think we meet all the requirements, uh, moving forward. You know, Blonigans, he's, I, I don't know that he's, um, he said they looked at it a long time ago, but they didn't make a move until they got notice of a public hearing for this and we are requiring, or applying for signs as well. So, they didn't not, um, they did this only, they're doing this, in my opinion, just to prevent a third billboard on the Zabinski pro- property. They have to go and change their, their condition, they have to amend their conditional use permit and do these things to, to make, to get their request done. And I, everything's been approved. Our application is in according to that and, um, you know, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I, I would like to address some of the things that were said. We just recently found out that we couldn't move that blue sign from Minnesota Logos. I got off the phone with him, uh, just early this week because we tried to move that sign over the wintertime. The gentleman that owns Minnesota Logos told us that he can't move it anyways until the ground thaws, so he'll, he'd look at it in the springtime. I just found out on Wednesday that they would not be able to move that sign. I was very hopeful they would be able to and we wouldn't be in this position. As far as trying to pull the permits and stuff like that, Franklin was in there trying to pull permits from MinDOT and they're, and, and they have rules for a reason. And they were unable to pull it. I don't mind Zabinski's putting signs up. That is not the issue here. It's their property. They're allowed to do what they want with it as long as it falls in the, the, the rules that everybody has to play by. I have no problem whatsoever with that. And in fact, I hope it's very profitable for them. My, my, my issue is, is I spent the last four and a half, five years before John was even employed here trying to extend the, the, uh, the billboard zoning out there. Right after I bought that property, I was trying to get that done. And so, I have a lot of time and money invested in this, so I have to look at my investment out there as well. And so, you know, we didn't know any of this was happening until Thursday when we got notice or Friday when it came in the mail. So, we had to react quickly here. It was never my intent to be malicious or, or do anything here. It's just based off of spacing and sightlines. And so, we, you know, I, I wish somebody would've called me because we, we probably could've worked this out sooner. But the way it stands now is, um, I don't think they, they will get a permit from MinDOT on their current location there because we have ours already pulled.
As a planning commission, we make recommendations. We do not change with MinDOT or that. We have to go by city guidelines. And unfortunately, we're gonna have to go off of the paperwork we have in front of us. It can't be what-if, what-if, whatever. That's the decisions we have to make is out of the city ordinance.
Oh, question, Jeff, if you want to come back to the mic or Stacy, you're welcome to stay as well. Your question, your concern is the, the placement of that standalone sign as it is would be within the five hundred feet and precluded by MinDOT of your sign?
Yes. The, the way it stands now is they won't get a, 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 a permit for that because where ours is pulled, it's within that five hundred feet now.
And I, I would echo, 'cause I, I mean, for our purposes, we work off of the city's standards. I mean, if, if something is approved at our level and it gets to MinDOT and doesn't meet their needs, that's, that's a MinDOT issue. We require that when we issue a billboard permit, it has to come with the MinDOT approval, so we know that they've signed off on it. And that's pretty standard fare.
And, and another reason that we hurried up and pulled that permit is because in previous meetings, when we first were trying to put these up, I was like ten feet or so short of putting a fourth billboard up ourselves. But at the time, it was said that there, um, uh, there was, be no appetite for, for, you know...
Changing the spacing requirements. Yeah, it was made very clear that there was no appetite at all, um, to change any of the spacing requirements. And so, um, just, this is, I'm Stacy Blonigan, by the way. Good evening, everyone. But, um, I just wanted to also address the comment of, you know, that we were kinda trying to rush to do this. Well, of course, we were blindsided by it. It was wintertime. No one's putting billboards up in Minnesota in the wintertime. And so, we had planned to address this issue in the spring, as Jeff stated, when the ground thawed. Uh, the logical time, since the timing of the MinDOT permits are only valid for a hundred and twenty days, you, you have to wait until spring or you're gonna run yourself out of time. But, um, nothing malicious was done here. And, you know, just to kind of, to, to counteract that, um, Franklin does billboard signs day in and day out. They're very aware of MinDOT's regulation of the zoning requirements of business, commercial, or industrial. So, the fact that they went and applied for that permit before having that zoning, you know, if we're gonna stand here and try to make each other look bad, I would just highlight that fact. So, they know what they were doing when they were going to the cit- the MinDOT, trying to rush that through. They do this day in, day out. This is a brand-new thing to us. We're a small business in the community, just trying to get started, trying to make a go of it. So, we are definitely not trying to do anything malicious or backhanded. We're simply trying to react to the information that we learned of Thursday afternoon. So...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bob Zabinski, twenty-seven oh five, Conley Road six, Wait Park. It seems to me that this group, having approved the situation that the Blonigans are in, in the fact that they were informed of it Thursday and quickly grabbed a, a permit Friday, does put it, them in an awkward position. But I don't know how you can hold these people hostage to something that was already approved by this commission and they were given the permit to put the signs that they wanted. I don't know how the, you can hold these people hostage and force them to move one sign because the other people can't put theirs where they intended to put it. I mean, that's after the fact, I think.
I'm Lee Zabinski. I'm one of Kathy and Jerry's, uh, sons. Thirty-one ninety, Conley Road one thirty-seven. I can, I can see that pretty, pretty much from, just south of my house. I, I would just encourage the, uh, wanted to encourage the, the commission to approve both or recommend approval of both the conditional use permit and the rezoning. Like Bob had said, based on, uh, based on the permitting that's already in place on, on neighboring property. That's really all I have to say.
With their request to move that sign, does it have to be seven hundred and, right on the, right on the property line to, to make, uh, one billboard go away? I, I, I don't know. That, they should be, they can move it ten or fifteen feet and maybe get something to work out. But I think this is, um, just trying to take out some competition. I'm aware of the rules with, that the DOT and this property is in a billboard zone by the city of Wait Park. So, we can apply for a billboard permit there. Fortunately, the under, underlying, underlying zoning has to be...
The underlying zoning, it, it, billboard corridor is not a zoning district.
I know, I know.
I just wanna be clear on that, that, the, when the MinDOT application says zoning district, it's existing as A-one agro-residential. That's, whether it was intentional or not...
It is a billboard corridor, right? There is a billboard corridor.
But that's not a zoning district. So, please don't make that mistake again.
But, um, so, uh, we're here to get, they're approved for three permits. Zabinskis would like to get approved for three permits as well. And, and, and what was approved is what everybody's going by. So, I encourage the approval on the conditional use permits and, and you know, the state, they have, you know, so many days to build your billboard and, and, um, and then the permit goes away. So, I, um, not very happy with what's happening here, but yeah, and we're, um, it's competition, trying to take this competition out. So, I'd just like to get, if they get, get three signs, we'd like to have three signs as well. So, we can, we can move ours in maybe twenty feet or so, but that would be about it for, um, sightline purposes of our own as well. So, thank you very much.
I have no problem with competition. In fact, if Zabinskis wanted to rezone their whole strip along the, all the way up to fifteen, they could put five signs in. And I would have, I would have no problem with that. It's, I'm not here to condemn the Zabinskis on what they're trying to do. What they're trying to do, they have every right to do. My only issue is, is with the spacing of that one sign there. So, we will have a total of three signs. If they rezone that other portion and just shifted everything down, they could end up with five signs there. And I have no problem with that. That's their right to do that.
Commission members, I'm gonna state, uh, some items here that, that I'm thinking of. Number one, I think, as Chair Janzki mentioned, we have to review this request based on the, the request at hand and what was previously approved. For better or worse, we have not received a formal application from the Blonigans. I think because the issue is more with the five hundred foot distance, that's, that's the MinDOT standard versus the thousand foot, that's our standard. I think perhaps their option or recourse would be to approach MinDOT to see if there's some potential variance option through them or or some other alternative. I'm open, should it be deemed justifiable or necessary, I'm open to considering a future variance option to reduce the setback for the Blonigan billboard in that instance, if it's justifiable. Well, if it comes up, I'd review the request to reduce from that thousand foot. If they can prove to me that there is indeed a, a, a issue that's outside of their control that, that does create a sightline issue. I don't think that should come at the expense of a proposal that's being made based on what was, what was previously approved and working off what seemed to be the best information they had available. I'm irritated that, uh, applica- I'm irritated that, uh, application was made to MINDOT that misrepresented the zoning district. I don't think that bodes well for anybody in, in, involved either party, but I can't change that. And I don't want to be, as I mentioned to both parties, I don't want to be put in a situation where the city and myself regret opening up this area for billboards if it's just gonna create headaches for us. I think we need to be equitable and I think the way we, we do that is to look at this request based on what we have submitted and then look at future requests that the Blonigans may submit based on their own merits.
The original, uh, conditional use permit that we applied for, does it state on the conditional use permit that that location has to be at that spot? Because from when I read it, I thought it blanketed the property. And so the conditional use permit was when we rezoned from agriculture out there to commercial and that the spacing had to be a thousand foot. If you go beyond a thousand foot, we met all your guidelines. If we go below the thousand foot, we don't meet your guidelines. And then we won't be, the conditional use permit would not be valid.
I don't have the language in front of me. I did have a message in with our city attorney's office regarding the, the language on the resolution. So I, I can't answer that question at the moment.
I, I.
But typically, I mean, when we have agenda, or we have attachments to a, excuse me for a moment. When we have attachments or exhibits that are sent along with a, with a request, those are approved in that configuration with the request.
Okay. Cause when I spoke with, I, 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 I called my attorney today and I'm, I'm not trying to bring that into this, but I was asking his opinion. And he stated, well, he would have to look at the conditional use permit, but if it wasn't clearly stated that it c- it could be, it blanketed the whole property where we wouldn't have to go through the process of getting another conditional use permit, that it would be already there because we were, we were granted three sign locations.
Three sign locations had a footprint where they were going.
Yes.
When we did it.
About where they were gonna.
I mean, if, if that's the case, then there's not a lot of use in.
And I'm just asking the question.
In submitting a, a site plan that says where your signs are proposed, because if, if you just say they're gonna be a thousand feet apart from any other signs, that would fulfill it. I mean, we, we require and request the, the site plan with the proposed spacing for a reason.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
I just want to state that I, I would like to see something that works for all parties. But I, again, I think we need to review this request on, on its own merits and take the following, whatever comes as a follow-up on it, on its own. And if they choose to slug it out and with their attorneys, that's, that's up to them and we'll answer their questions as we need to.
Just as maybe a suggestion, John, and follow-up with looking for a solution. How about a variance for their third sign, which they haven't built yet, to be pushed to the east and within that thousand foot spacing? If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, there's a ditch there, a county ditch or a creek or something that has to get crossed to get to that site.
Well, that, that's what I was referencing in that, in that, uh, if it can be justified, I don't have a problem working through a variance process. If it, if it, for either party, if there's a way to justify it. I mean, if, if it comes out of, if it comes out of Blonigans having to put their sign where that is and we need to modify this one to, to meet that spacing and tighten it up, because that's, you made an application in good faith based on what you knew to be the, the approved site plan. That's something we can look at. You know, I, I, we can't do that tonight, but I think there's, there's a future option there.
Well, just, we're just trying to look for a solution as well.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Any other input from the public?
Just to follow up on what, what Mr. Normberg had suggested, I, Steve might get mad at me, but I think that, uh, I think my family, our family would probably be inclined to support the notion of some kind of a variance to make things work on the Blonigan property as well. If it, uh, if their concerns about sightlines are valid, I don't know anything about sightlines or advertising or anything of, any of that. But if, if, uh, if the, uh, planning director and the city of White Park can determine that that's a valid, valid concern, I think our family would probably be, uh, inclined to support a variance to make things work for the neighbors as well.
Yeah. And, and some of that will need some, some further review as to, you know, what exact form that may take, whether it's something is applied for by the Blonigans for their location or by your, your party. I, I just want to see this come to a, amenable end, that, that both, both people or both property owners can come with their three signs that they were seeking. But I, I, again, I do think we need to approve or review this, this request in terms of its current, current information that's in front of you and we will have to deal with what comes of it at a further time. You know, we're, we may be getting a little ahead of ourselves and speculating, you know, what form that may take. But I'm, I'm supportive of, you know, both of, I think both parties, but I, I, I don't want this to turn to sound like a courtroom, but, you know, the option is to either work together and figure out a, a solution that is gonna take some form and, you know, perhaps it's amenable, perhaps it's not. Maybe everybody leaves happy, maybe not. Or we look at, you know, what's the, what's the best procedural option to get there? And a- again, if it's something that is for the Zabinskis, that's, they're working off the best information they have available, which was the approved site plan from the Blonigans when they did their project. If, if Blonigans want to take that approach and relocate that sign again, we, we would require that that be come through the amendment process for, to, to move that by our standards. If that somehow pushes or is deemed to push the, the Western Zabinski sign outside of that setback, if it still works for you for sightline purposes, I'm, and it's still functional, I'm willing to, to look at the option of, of reducing that thousand foot setback there, as I would do for the Blonigans on their side. If it, if, if there's justification for it. In your case, if they move their sign and that throws yours into a wrench or throws a wrench into your project based, you know, when, when you were starting that, I think there's possibility there. It may not be the, you know, cleanest process to go through and it would be subject to review by planning commission and city council. But I think it's something we, we can look at.
Yeah. Jerry Zabinski, uh, yeah, I, I think you answered a lot of what I was going to say. Uh, I think our petition is in order. I think you can pass it. We will try to work with Mr. Blonigan and yourself, but if we put a hold on our, on our, on this one, which was applied for, I think properly, then it puts Franklin's sign at a disadvantage to move forward in spring. And we will try to work with whatever way we can to work with a variance. Thank you.
And I'll say that I'm, I'm by no means a sign location expert, so I'm working off of what I'm, you know, kind of told by both parties as far as sightlines and what's an ideal location versus not. So I don't know what would come of it if, if any of these, for either party, start getting moved around, if they're still workable. You know, do, do they, do they get to a point where that they're, they're not as viable because, because they're being moved around too much? You know, I assume when a sign location is picked, that they do their homework and place it accordingly to best visibility and to look at the, you know, maximizing the spacing. So I, I, you know, aside from the little, little hang up with, with the submittal of the MINDOT permit, a little, a little ahead of schedule here, both parties I'd worked with previously worked, both the Zabinskis and the Blonigans for both requests up in, until mainly yesterday, we worked through without issue. And I think, to me, both, all parties were acting in, in seemingly good faith at, at the time. So I, I just want to promote something that gets to an end result, that, that gets both of them their three signs. Can I guarantee that? No, because that's subject to the city council ultimately is, we're gonna have to figure out what, how, you know, what process that takes and what comes of perhaps some discussions between the, the, the parties here tonight. But I think that it is worth looking into. That being said, again, that's all, that's all kind of outside the scope of, of what's in front of us. And I think, you know, you have information and, and perhaps the, the situation, or we get more information ahead of the, of the city council meeting, which we're certainly gonna try to, you know, I'll let this sit idle. But, uh, I, I think we need to, you know, I'd recommend reviewing this based on, on the information in front of you. And you could certainly take comments into consideration, but, uh, there, weigh it on its merits and, and move from there. Well, I think we'll leave the door open to further discussion as we need to. And don't be surprised perhaps to see another request back from this in the coming month or two, but.
I just wanted to state, and I promise this is the last time I'll come up, because I know you guys are, uh, got more important, or not more important, but other things to do. We were acting in good faith the whole time as well. And we re, we had no idea what was going on with the Zabinskis until, like I said, we got notice on Thursday. That being said, we did everything correct too. We wouldn't have gotten a permit from MINDOT if we were not doing everything correctly. And, and I've thought our conditional use permit applied to our property. Otherwise, we would have been in contact a long time ago. But recently, like I stated before, we had just found out we could not move that sign through Minnesota logos. And so we're, we're not trying to be malicious here at all. And yes, I would work with Zabinskis and come to a solution as well. You know, I think it's, it's only the right thing to do. So, and I'm not trying to eliminate a sign location here. I'm not trying to, you know, i- it's just protecting what we have as well.
Anybody else or?
A motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to a second?
Second.
Motion is second, close public hearing. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same side. Public hearing closed at seven thirty-three. John, we gotta do these in three different sections?
Yeah, it's three, three separate items, so I would recommend doing them separately.
Per particular?
No, you could take the, any, any order is fine. You can take them as the, um, as they're presented. You can do conditional use permit first.
I guess far as our, we have to go off of information based on us and what's been presented to us. And it does go, our recommend, we make a recommendation that goes to city council. And if MINDOT's in charge of the permits, I mean, that's another factor that's above and beyond even the city. So. Let's start with a motion for conditional use permit.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I will, uh, make a motion to recommend approval of the, uh, conditional use permit.
All second.
Motion in a second. Any conditions?
Those five conditions, the staff recommendations listed as five conditions.
The motion is second to approve with additions as set forth from the staff. All in favor, sing with by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, pass with all present. Rezoning, rezoning the property to commercial?
BPC two.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'm going to, um, make a motion to recommend approval of the, uh, rezoning application.
Second.
Got a motion to second to rezone business district, district, commercial. All in favor, sing with by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, pass with. Suggestion variance.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, I will also make a motion that we, uh, uh, recommend approval of the su- suggested motion variance.
Second.
We got a motion to second to approve the variance for the property. All in favor, sing with by saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign, pass with all present. This will go on to the city council. Hopefully you guys can work something out prior to that, so.
Yeah. And, and there, there are two, uh, possibilities here. If it's something that, um, can be changed, kind of minor adjustments. If, if say if the, the Zabinski application changes in some form, uh, they shuffle the locations or anything. Potentially, we, we could need to see it back here again. But it's kind of at staff discretion if it's minor enough. Again, it's usually a pretty tight window to be considered minor. So we'll, it could, it could potentially be re-reviewed.
About checking the vari- for a variance to stack them tighter to the north instead of, or to the west instead of to the east. Instead of moving the sign to the east, if you move it to the west and maybe take the other two and move them a little closer together, so they're, maybe not a thousand, but they're eight hundred or nine hundred feet apart.
Yeah. So I guess, right now, it's until we can perhaps discuss further with everybody. And again, I would like to see if we can get everybody in a room together and see if there's some options here. I can't force that, but I think it may be beneficial here. Yeah, it's, it, it could be seen again by the city council, or excuse me, by the planning commission. But they also have the option to move forward exactly as it's been reviewed here tonight at the city council. There's no requirement that anyone has to coordinate or anything. We can't force that hand. We encourage it, but we can't force it. So it, it's potential that, we have to see what comes of it in the, in the coming weeks ahead of the city council. But right now, it is, it was anticipated to go to the city council by, at May sixth. I don't have anything further.
I motion adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor, sing with saying aye.
Aye.
All pose same sign. Meeting adjourned seven thirty-nine.